Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs. Today is July 7th, 2022. It's approximately 6:33 PM. On this meeting to order via the Zoom app, it's a virtual meeting. Everyone from the public will have an opportunity to be heard if they wish to be heard. Madam clerk, would you please read into the record the statement of compliance?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, PL 1975, Chapter 231, setting for the time, date, place, and purpose of this meeting through a legal notice, published in the record, posted on the bulletin board, and on the borough website.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Kranjak. Councilmember Di Gregorio.
Present.
Member Luciano. Member Park. Member Begatz. Member Kepaskis.
Here.
Council President Katrubes.
Here.
Attorney Mensch.
Here.
I think we got it.
Do you know if Mr. Park will be joining us?
He didn't say if he was or not. I didn't get any response.
Okay, so he's absent. Would everybody, please, hold on a second.
Miss Begatz is here now.
Let's recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
By the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice,
liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Di Gregorio, I think you've got to brush up on that. There's, there's been several deaths in town, and I wanted to have a moment of silence, but I wanted to have more people present for it. So I think what I'm going to do is just hold off until next week when we have our regular meeting and we have more people for, to pay respects with. That said, I think there were 12 COVID cases this week. There were seven or five last week, so still around. No one's really going to the hospital as far as I know. There are different strains out there now, substrains rather. The, the agenda item for the special meeting is the approval of minutes and there is a whole slew of them. There are very many of them, so. How, I guess what we could do is we just go through each one separately because.
I'll make a motion to vote on all of them at the same time.
Second.
That's, that's fine if you wish to do that, we'll do them. So they're on the agenda. July 14th, 2021, regular. November 10th, 2021, regular. November 18th, 2021, closed and special meeting. December 8th, 2021, closed and regular meeting. December 15th, 2021, closed and special meeting. January 12th, 2022, closed and regular meeting. January 26th, 2022, emergency special meeting. March 3rd, 2022, closed session. March 9th, 2022, closed and regular meeting. March 31st, 2022, emergency special meeting. April 4th, 2022, closed and regular meeting. April 27th, 2022, regular meeting. May 18th, special budget presentation. May 19th, 2022, special meeting. Ms. Porters, were there any others that you added after that?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
There will be some coming up with the July 13th meeting as well.
So that, that's all of them and if I could just have a motion to move them all for approval.
There's already a motion and a second.
There, there was a motion to actually do them all together. There wasn't a motion for these specific meetings, so I just want to.
I'll make the motion to move them all.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, can I have a roll call?
Member Di Gregorio.
Yes.
Member Luciano.
Can you come back to me, please?
Sure. Member Park is absent.
Are we allowed to, are we allowed to do that, Mr. Mensch or Mr. Collins? We have two lawyers on the meeting. I'm not sure why, but are we allowed to go out of order like that?
Yeah, he can pass and come back.
Member Begatz. Member Begatz, I think you're muted. Give me one second and check. Member Begatz.
Yes.
Member Kepaskis.
Yes.
Council President Katrubes.
Yes.
Member Luciano.
I'm going to, only because I haven't had a chance to go through them all, and I know that there was, I've had questions previously about the minutes with regard to being properly indicated what time people came, what time, when people were muted, when people were asked, or people were removed from meetings, so. Besides the fact that I haven't been able to go through them, through them all thoroughly, I'm going to abstain.
Member Luciano, I think you'd like to know as well, one of the reasons why the, that is not on the reflected on the minutes is because we used to have a Zoom account. And when it was handed over to us, and if I'm not mistaken, I'd like the borough to turn it to, to correct me if I'm wrong. But when it was handed over to us, it was never handed over to the borough with the proper username and password, and after repeated tries, we still were not given the proper username and password. Effectively, we were locked out of the account, and we don't have access to any of those records. I had previously tried to get access to those to those records, but previous attorney Bernstein did not allow me to get it. Things of that nature. I think you were on those emails, but that's really the reason. That's really the reason.
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
It's all right, but that's really the reason that I believe why that's not reflected on the minutes. We just don't, we've been locked out.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not pointing finger, and I understand that, I really do. I mean, but maybe the mayor could help us with the last meeting. He said that the chief had backups to all those codes, which I'm still trying to figure out how, how that's happened, but I'm not pointing fingers. I'm more saying that I'm taking responsibility that I didn't have adequate time to really review them. It's more of a, more of an issue that was just a sidebar, that's something that I had raised to the attention of everybody. It's really more on me that I haven't had time to really go through them and, and feel comfortable with them. But I mean, if, if anything, I would probably vote yes because the court is telling us to. So that's why I want it to be moved later, because you know, this is something by the court that has to be done. We should have been doing it more efficiently before, so I appreciate you guys passing me and letting me come back, but that's why I'm abstaining.
You highlighted the fact that you haven't read them, but we've had them for over a week, or about a week, and if, if you want to let you catch up and do some reading, we could take a little recess here and let you read them all and then come back and tell us if you disagree or agree with the minutes.
What?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I do.
I'm sorry, Mr. Di Gregorio, I'm asking Mr. Luciano if he would like to have a recess right now to go back and read these, and then we'll come back when he's ready. Mr. Luciano, would you like to do that?
No, as you've indicated, if we've had them for more than a week, I don't think that, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and a short recess is, is really, I mean, I understand what you're doing, but I think you have the votes, and no, there's no reason to ask for, I didn't ask for recess. I thank you for offering it, but we can move on to the next one.
You're welcome. I want you to feel very comfortable. I'm even willing to read them to you if you'd like.
Well, if you'd like after the meeting, I'll meet you, I'll meet you in the park. I'll meet you in Johnson Park. You can come read them to me.
No, I could read them to you right now if you'd like.
Well, no, I don't, I don't think we can do it this time.
The time is such a challenge for you to actually do your.
The only challenge we have in this borough mayor is you, so please, let's move on.
Well, I knew you would say that, but you know, I do expect people to do work in between meetings.
Yeah, well, let's move on.
The time in between meetings is actually more important than the time at the meetings, because that's when you do your work and prepare for the next meeting. Mr. Di Gregorio, what would you like to say?
Basically, most of these minutes, and correct me if I'm wrong, but most of these minutes were not during the time that the mayor had control of Zoom, and he had lost control of Zoom. So, you know, I think as far as the, you know, the Zoom records, that would be more interesting for the minutes that were before. So now that we are less muted and less thrown out of meetings, actually not at all. It wasn't for me not, I didn't see it as a huge issue because most of the meetings that were on, that we approved tonight, the minutes were were out of that time range.
Were you going to read them all, Mr. Di Gregorio?
I don't have to answer the questions. You know, you're not the, you're the mayor, but you're not the professor. I did, I did my homework and thank you very much.
That's your prerogative, but Mr. Luciano, we'll try to give you more time next time. Okay, next on the agenda.
Mayor, can I say something?
Are you still taking the roll call?
No, I think we're done. May I say something, though?
Yeah.
So, Councilman Luciano, I know at the December meeting, some of the minutes were not approved because of that reason. Um, so after that, I did put in, if you would, if you would read all the minutes, I did add if someone was muted or somebody was thrown out, because nobody was thrown out, but some were muted. I did put it on in the minutes, just so you know.
Yes, ma'am. Like, once again, it wasn't, I mean, we're turning this into a bigger issue than.
No, I get it.
It's not, it's not, I'm not, I'm not, it's not a reflection of you. It's not, I'm just saying that, you know, and I'm taking forward, but mayor could try to twist it in the wind anyway, once, but, you know, I mean, I've had other things that have happened in my life recently, and I didn't have time to read them, so. You give a nice, nice gesture. I'm recording that, too. We'll use that in the next campaign because it is your clown face, but I appreciate everybody entertaining me for a moment.
Mr. Park has joined.
Yes, I was just going to say that. He has joined us.
4:00 PM. Hello, Mr. Park. Would you like to vote on the minutes?
Isn't the vote already over?
Okay, yes.
Is the vote still going on? Can he vote?
Yes.
I make a motion to allow Mr. Park to vote.
Second.
I'm joking. You already have your votes. He can vote. I don't care. I'm just joking. I mean.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Park, would you like to vote to approve the minutes, all of them?
Yeah, all of them, yes.
Query, what were council members, Begatz and Kepaskis abstaining from everything except the May series?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just, just make sure the record reflects that.
Sure. We'll do that.
Because, Mr. Kepaskis, do you agree with that?
I'm sorry, what?
You're abstaining.
What was the question?
Mitch, you're abstaining from everything except May 18th and May 19th, right?
I'm just, I'm voting yes to the, I mean, the motion was for all of them, so I'm just voting yes for all of them.
Right, but you weren't present for those meetings, so my agenda.
Mayor, Robert's rules of order do not require somebody to be present to vote specifically.
Well, you know what, we always had, it makes no sense for people who weren't at a meeting to vote on minutes, and I see my agenda has abstentions for everything except the two May meetings, so it's up to you guys.
It's a test anyhow, so let's.
Already voted, let's move on, right?
We, we just need to do it the right way. Matt now has changed the rule again on us. He says you could vote on anything, no matter whether or not you were there, so.
Any rule that Matt has made has been 100% better than any of the attorneys.
Actually, I'm glad you said that, because remember when we had the vacancy and you guys wouldn't fill it, and Matt Mensch said you don't have to?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was the law at the time.
Let me finish.
It was the law at the time. It was the law at the time.
The New Jersey Supreme Court agreed with me and not with Mr. Mensch, because Mensch disenfranchised voters.
Yesterday.
Oh, you disenfranchised voters by not having William Wu's vacant and voted on last November.
Don't interrupt, Mr. Luciano. Let me have the floor.
When you tell lies, like you say, when people tell lies, you have to set the record straight, so I'm setting the record straight.
You know, you're the person who can't even find time to read minutes. Let me have the floor, and then you could have the floor. Let me.
I found time for this meeting, though.
The New Jersey Supreme Court yesterday decided that you cannot leave council member seats vacant. They agreed with me, they disagreed with, with you, Mr. Mensch, with you, Mr. Kep, with you, Mr. Di Gregorio, and you, Mr. Luciano, because effectively, what the Supreme Court said was.
Make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Don't interrupt me, Mr. Luciano.
Make a motion to open a meeting to the public.
Essentially, you lose the guarantee.
There's a motion on the floor in second.
Of all, the municipality. Okay, look, I'm not talking over you, Mr. Di Gregorio.
Can we take a roll call?
Sorry, but this has nothing to do with the agenda. Can we please move on?
Exactly. Thank you, councilman. I call the question. I make a motion to call the question.
Let's make, let's take a vote.
It's always wrong.
Ms. Porters, please call the question and mute the mayor.
So what should happen is actually last in, first out. Mitch, I like you a lot. I think you're.
Take a roll call, please. This is not the agenda.
He was actually.
I make a motion.
Not on the agenda.
That the club mute the mayor.
She should have the seat.
I make a, you got a motion in a second, but can we take a roll call to mute the mayor, please?
You can't mute me. You can't mute me.
We control this. We control this meeting.
You're so juvenile, immature, and unprofessional.
May I just say one thing very importantly?
To open to the public.
No, before we do that.
Did I have a motion to open to the public? I don't recognize you right now.
I'm sorry, but we didn't.
That's what you do. You say you're going to recognize people, and you never do. That's why we talk over you.
Did we vote, or did we not? Matt, Matt, did we or did we not vote on the minutes? Because
You voted.
No, but we voted to consolidate. Did we actually?
We voted.
Yeah.
Councilman. Wake up. But wake up, we voted.
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure.
So it's. And gentlemen, I apologize.
Mr. Mr., you know, no one's recognized right now. We have a motion to open to the public. And we are following Robert's rules. So if you want to speak, address the chairman, which is the mayor, which is me, okay? Otherwise, do not speak out in turn.
Oh, I had my hand up for a while.
That's not how you, that's not Robert's rules. Robert's rules is not raising your hand. This is not kindergarten, Mr. Di Gregorio. There's a specific way under Robert's rules to approach and request the chairman's attention. You haven't figured that out?
Well.
Motion to open to the public.
I'm requesting your attention. Your.
That's, that's not the right way to do it. I'm not going to instruct you. Is there a motion to open to the public?
Okay, so I guess I can't speak.
No, you can't.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to point out that you, that with Mr., you were going on and on, but Mr. Wu had resigned. And the date that he resigned, we would have had a free and open election to fill that seat. It was you.
The court decided.
It was, it was you who moved the date up.
Mr. Di Gregorio.
It was your party that switched it. It was your party, not the court. But you disenfranchised the voters.
No, 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 go back and read the.
You disenfranchised the voters.
The court agreed with us.
You disenfranchised the voters. Yes, they agree with you that you didn't want to have everybody in the town do an election. That's what you wanted. You wanted an appointment, not an election, so that's, so you won. Yes, you won. And, but you disenfranchised.
No, actually, no, you guys did. You voted to keep that seat vacant for nine months.
The prevailing law at the time.
Crazy, what you guys did. It wasn't prevailing law. Who follows?
prevailing law at the time.
It's fine.
Who follows?
Can we open, please?
You guys violated the constitutional rights.
We, I make the motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
If there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand, state your name and address. Mrs. O'Shea.
I thought we didn't recognize hand raising.
That's for, that's for Robert's rules and you guys. Mrs. O'Shea, go ahead.
She's muted.
You're muted.
So she.
Awesome.
So she, we can't hear you.
Okay.
There we go.
All right, start all over. I'm going to go through some things very quickly, try to anyway. Protocol should be that anybody who wants to speak should be recognized by the mayor as official of the meeting. Okay, you can make a motion, you can second it, but if he didn't recognize you to start with, the motion is not on the floor, and it's not seconded until you're recognized by the mayor. Number two. The issue around the open seat from William Wu, that was adjudicated by Judge Wilson. And when it, when the order came down, the county committee gave three names. When the, the next meeting, Mr. Farrow, Councilman Farrow nominated each of those three names individually, and he could not get a second from Mr. Katrubes, from Mr. Park, from Mr. Luciano, or Mr. Di Gregorio. So each one failed. All right, so then that went back to the county committee. The county committee then chose King Zameki as one of the three names given and to be seated on the council. She was sworn in on October 12th. When she came to the meeting on October 13th, she identified herself, asked to be seated as a council. And Mr. Munch said she could not be seated as a council because of the resolution that was put in place. This was to try to keep from what Mr. Katrubes had said, didn't want to give control to the mayor. You know, it's so ridiculous. And now that ruling was ruled by the High Court in New Jersey to be incorrect, okay? The reading of the statute 19 was incorrect. Now, King Zameki was sworn in to that seat prior to Mitch Kapaskas being sworn in on May 11th, okay, which is ironic because the hearing, the oral arguments on this issue with Lind, with Linden took place in April, and I really have a, a feeling that possibly parties involved here might have felt that they, that the ruling was going to go against the decision that was made here and quickly put Mr. Kapaskis on trying to again subvert the rule of law. Okay, and it's atrocious. It is really atrocious. Okay, that's my, my point on that. And King Zameki should be seated. And I'm sorry, Mr. Kapaskis, you know, I don't know anything about you, but you probably should not be on the council right now because you have seven council people that have been sworn in. So, you know, last in, first out, so to speak. Next, I would like to address the fact that your clerk certified Ms. Begatz and her husband to run for county committee in District 2 after being notified by the county in February of the, all the, the house numbers and streets that were in the wrong district, and that was notified, she was notified. Unfortunately, your Jewel Thompson Chin was notified, Kathy Scancarella and Rosemary Weber, they were all on the email. And then for her to certify Rebecca and her husband for the county committee, that was a major, major fault on her part, and you people should not let that stand. She should be written up on that, that should be in her personnel file, because one of her major job responsibilities is elections, and, and she screwed it up point blank, okay? So I'm just putting that on the record so that everybody knows that she did it. And David, the Democrats didn't, didn't screw it. There's a, they did it right, okay, because they had somebody in their county committee that was paying attention. Unfortunately, our county committee chairperson was not paying attention, and Rebecca was not paying attention because she was notified in March, and.
Notified.
Every, every resident got a letter. I got, I got a copy of the letter from the county. I got a copy of the letter from the county.
I did not.
Residents that were on that list got a letter from the county in March, okay? Maybe you don't open your mail, or maybe you don't care.
Tell me what I'm doing.
Trying to put yourself in a place that you don't belong. That's the problem. Thank you.
You are trying to push yourself in. This is what you're trying to do, and control everybody. It's not happening here. That's all what I can tell you.
Well, what actually happened, though?
I don't know.
What actually, just tell us, what happened?
You don't know, you don't know Mario any explanation, okay?
What?
You do not owe Mario any explanation, and the only time Mario asks for something is when he needs something. Let it go.
I'd be happy to provide copies of all those letters to every house of them.
I feel badly that there's so much dissension over what district Riffka lives in or doesn't live in, so I just don't understand what happened, you know?
So you live in the first district, Rebecca. You live in the first district.
Thank you for letting me know now, okay?
The county told you in March, but you chose to ignore it. You tried to dumb your way through it, and you had a clerk that covered up for you because she's in line with Mr. Katrubes.
Those are bold accusations, Ms. O'Shea. I think you should be very careful with what you say.
I said, I said. The clerk is in line with Mr. Katrubes. Mr. Katrubes went and brought her back.
Already on record, thank you.
All right, lower the temperature. I just.
You have an opportunity to retract your statement.
Lower the temperature, Mr. Katrubes. Stop threatening the residents.
I'm not threatening anybody. I'm making it clear that she should be very careful.
Just making a statement, making a statement.
You are constantly attacking.
All right, let, let's just.
All of us.
Truth, the truth hurts, Rebecca. The truth hurts. The truth hurts. You want to argue with me? The truth hurts. I live in the second district. You don't. You don't live in the second district.
No, now I know I don't live there, so what?
You didn't live there from March either, and, and the clerk knew you didn't live there since February.
Oh, please.
I'm going to put it in the literature and I'll send it out to the town for you.
Lower the temperature, guys. Okay, so there was a mistake. You think it was intentional. Riffka says it was a mistake. We're not going to solve it tonight.
Honest mistake. What do you think? I'm eating from that? It's a, what's the matter with you, Mary? Where are you going with that?
Riffka, stop fighting with the residents. Any, any other residents? Okay. Do you have a motion to close the public portion?
Thank God.
Is that a motion or just a prayer?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm. There was one item on the agenda discussion. There's, there's been a committee, and they've done a great job of looking at improving Johnson Field, Woody, Woody Field, Johnson Park. And there's, there's plans that will be shared hopefully next week, if not sooner, by Mr. Hippelit, Borough Engineer, and I thank Mr. Katrubes, Kepaskis, and the, and Mr. Corino. I'm not sure if there's anyone else. Oh, Billy, the director for, for their time and effort on that. It, we, look, we disagree on a lot of things, Mr. Katrubes and I do, but on this one, I, I feel that we do agree, or at least we did last Friday.
So can all the council members get a brief thing on what that plan is?
Yeah, so like I said, there'd be a plan being presented to everyone, council and to the public. I haven't heard anything since Friday, but hopefully actually, most likely by the middle of next week. Do you know any other updates on that?
I have no updates and, you know, I, I think that we should just table tonight's discussion because, because there are no updates.
Okay, I mean, do you want to just speak?
I'll second that.
Well, actually, if you want, you can speak to the plan and inform everyone here tonight about what, what the the broad framework of.
Call the question. Got a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I think it's better off, you know, I think it's just better off if everybody just has the plan in hand and make it much easier for everybody just to.
All right, suffice it to say, the, the public, the children, everyone will be well served with the plan when it's presented. And again, I thank everyone for their efforts on that. We don't need to call pastors, Mr. Di Gregorio. We're just not going to discuss it. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Second.
Okay, good night, everyone, and again.
Who made the motion? Who made the second, please?
We will, we will. I'm sorry, I'm speaking, Mr. Luciano.
I'm just asking who made the motion.
Speaking, can you just hold your thought for one minute?
Okay.
I want the public to understand that I know there's been a lot of deaths in town, and as I said at the beginning of this meeting, we will have a respectful moment of silence next week when there's more people present, okay? So I don't want anyone leaving tonight thinking that I've been remiss. Thank you. Mr. Luciano wants to know who made the motion and who made this.
I'm just asking. I didn't hear it. I only heard Riffka say second. I didn't hear the motion.
Did not hear a second. Did not hear a second.
Okay, so is it too difficult to ask? Clarification?
Got it now.
Thank you.
You know, you have about five hours tonight. Go read the minutes that you didn't read before.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, go home and, and beat your wife.
Oh, whoa, is that where we're going, Mr. Luciano?
I thought we closed.
Unless you want to meet me in the park and read me the minutes.
Luciano seems.
I'll meet you at Johnson Park, and you can read me the minutes.
Such a dirty, vile.
I'll meet you in the park. You can read the minutes.